This is a call to order for the August 8, 2022 Canal and Chester Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Time in is 7:01. Mr. Serna, roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, here. Mr. Woldenthaler. Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Deeds?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Woldenthaler.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Serna and second by Ms. McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Now I need approval minutes. We have two motions tonight, so we need to approve June and July's minutes. The first motion will be for June.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the June 21, 22 PNZ Commission meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Serna. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Need a motion for the July minutes, and these are the minutes, if you recall, where we didn't have audio, but they were summarized. So I just need a motion for...
Motion approved the July 11 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes.
I will second that.
Motion made by Mr. Serna, second by Mr. Deeds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
I believe I have to abstain since I was not here.
If you read the minutes, you can report.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yes. The yes is there?
Okay, so the motion's approved, minutes approved. Per city statute, since there are four of us here tonight, we are missing a few of our commission members, we need four positive votes for an application to pass. So if we vote three to one, the application or the motion does not carry. So we would need four positive votes this evening from the four of us for the applications to pass. Now is the time for public comments, so if anybody's here to speak to us this evening before us for items that are not on our agenda. Time limit is four minutes. Okay? If you'll be speaking with us tonight regarding an application, I'd ask that you stand and take an oath if you're able. So if there's any chance you'll be speaking with us tonight, do you swear to be truthful in your testimony and tell the truth and nothing but the truth? So please say I do. Thank you. And I will now turn it over to staff.
The first application for tonight's agenda is variance 22-016. Address is 43 East Columbus Street. The request this evening is a variance to section 1161.02 subsection C1D to construct a new front porch that exceeds the average build-to line on East Columbus Street. The subject property is located in the Old Town Historic District, zoned Old Town Single Family. It consists of 0.38 acres. The property owner also has five acres, a separate parcel to the rear. The properties in this area are all zoned Old Town Single Family and have been in the National Register for the East Columbus Street District. The applicant this evening is requesting to replace the front porch on the property with a new full-face front porch. The applicant received approval in May of 2022 from the Landmarks Commission to remove the existing wood porch on the front of the home to construct a new full-width front porch. The Landmarks Commission made a positive recommendation to Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the variance as presented with a vote of six to zero. The existing front porch is five and a quarter foot deep and is located 13.15 feet from the street right-of-way. The proposed new front porch is eight feet deep and is located for 10, excuse me, 10.4 feet away from the street right-of-way. Up on the screen is the survey the applicant provided for the property. Again, you can see here the measurement of 18.4 from the right-of-way to the face of the house and to the porch. It is 13.15. The applicant again received approval for the designs up on the screen. The Landmarks Commission noted while it's a change to the style of the home, the front porch that they're looking to construct is at a usable depth at eight foot and that anything less than eight foot, given the profile of the home, would not seem to be appropriate. So that's why they made the positive recommendation. Up on the screen, you can see the existing front porch kind of extends at five feet, three inches, and again, the proposed is at eight. The Old Town Single Family zoning district requires an average build-to line, plus or minus three feet of all homes on the same side of the street. The existing average for this area is 15 feet. Again, that's plus or minus three feet to be within that average of what they're requesting. Because the new design puts a 10.4, it is less than the 14, excuse me, the 11-foot average that is acceptable for the Old Town District. Back in 2014, a property two doors down received approval for this variance that allowed for the front porch on their property to encroach four and a half feet from the calculated build-to line. And then this building we're in also received a variance in 2013 that allowed for this building in the Old Town area to encourage the build-to line as well. The applicant has put together their application here showing some similar examples of properties that they feel exceed what they are requesting to be comparable. They are also noting that the extension of this front porch does not impede on the sidewalk. There's still a five-foot separation from the sidewalk to the front porch, and the survey they have accompanying the variance request notes its consideration for approval. Staff agrees with the Landmarks Commission and recommends to Planning and Zoning Commission approval of variance VA 22-016. Again, the existing front porch is what our code would call a porterco design, which is used to identify the front entrance of the home and shelter from inclement weather. The applicant is seeking approval to construct a full-width front porch of the home that is deep enough to be usable with seating areas. With the increase in the porch depth, the applicant is providing a five-foot separation from the public walkway along East Columbus Street.
Any questions for staff?
I have one. Is there any recommendation as far as landscaping, since a significant amount of landscaping will be removed in order to put the porch in?
The Landmarks Commission did not have any discussion on landscaping for the project. I don't see the applicant here, so I don't know if he has a representative here with him for him this evening to answer that question. I do know that in the future, he has inquired about doing a curb cut to the right of the house to do an off-street kind of parking area for his vehicles. I've talked to him about adding landscaping for that component specifically, not related to this application per se, but something to help his Landmarks application for the off-street parking area to help screen it. He wanted it for four vehicles, so I told him by that size, it's a little more substantial than a normal driveway. Would that be a question, I guess, for the applicant at a later time since he's not here?
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant or representative present? Okay, so this is a variance. I'll now open it up for public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing by Mr. Serna, second by Mr. Deeds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Now I need a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to approve variance VA-22-016.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Serna. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Variance is passed.
The next application for tonight's agenda is Final Development Plan 22-003. This is an application that is an amendment to Final Development Plan text FDP-20-002. The location of the subject property is in the Green Gate subdivision off of Hill Road. The request this evening is to amend the original development text and exhibits regarding fencing for the subject property. This development consists of 46.17 acres on the west side of Hill Road. The property is part of the original PRD district for Green Gate that was established in 2003. The final development plan that was approved for this section of the overall planned residential district was approved in March of 2020 and approved 191 detached condominiums. This property has started Phase 1 and 2 of the development, which is the construction of the entire stretch of Green Gate Boulevard, as you can see on the screen, as well as some stub sections for future loop streets. The applicant is also starting the civil installation of roadways and utilities for Section 3 and 5, which is the southern kind of loop to Green Gate Boulevard that will add an additional 53 home sites in addition to the first 63 that have been approved and are actively building new detached condominiums. The applicant, up on the screen, here's that loop street that I was discussing. This is Section 3 and 5, this loop here. So this is 1 and 2. So this whole bottom half of the development will be ready for home site construction. The applicant is requesting to modify the development text for this subdivision. Page 4, the development text indicates no fences, other than invisible fences for pet containment shall be allowed. During the final development plan approval, staff is working with the applicant on the final revisions to that development text before Planning and Zoning Commission's review. During that time, the applicant was unsure how the condo documents would regulate the limited common area, which is an approximate 30-foot by 40-foot wide area directly behind each of the units. The limited common area for the Commission's reference is an area that allows for private improvements for those units, such as building decks, patios, other kind of areas that would impede how the association mows within that zone. So they set this zone up where that's where you're allowed to do those improvements and where staff could administratively approve those types of requests. During that discussion, it was unclear how that maintenance would be done, so the fencing was written as being prohibited to not impede the lawn maintenance of those areas. Since then, the developer has determined the entire limited common area would be maintained by the homeowner and not the HOA unless otherwise determined through that condominium association. So that's why the applicant is requesting to allow for fencing. The redline text on the right shows what was striked out. No fences, other than invisible fences for pet containment shall be allowed. The proposed amendment would allow for a four-foot-tall black aluminum fence that would be allowed within the limited common area. The applicant has provided an example of where it would go and what it would look like. This is a visual diagram showing you what that 40-by-30 LCA looks like behind those units. This is something that staff had put in the engineering documents. That way, it was calculated that each building could have the 40-by-30 area that didn't overlap, so you weren't having competing interests moving down the line. Because these are condominiums, there are no parcels for those units, so there's just minimum setbacks between each unit to be developed. So this was to try to help future homeowners understand their limits for where they can do that kind of improvement area. The exhibit provided by the applicant shows four different styles for aluminum fences, all four-foot tall. Again, the applicant is not requesting to restrict a specific fence design other than a simple style for those units. And then here's a diagram they put together showing the limited common area. Behind the home is restricted to 30-foot deep and 40-foot wide. They are putting the restriction in there that the fence can extend no more than one foot past the sides of the house to allow for mowing path in between. So that's why the fence stops short of that five-foot LCA kind of area. Staff is recommending that this request be recommended to City Council for approval. What makes the development unique is most of the areas on the east side of Daly Road within this corridor are part of a master planned district, the Myers Out Parcels, including this detached condo subdivision, and then any future commercial growth along Daly Road. When council allowed for the planned district zoning, they required that they have the final say on anything that goes in that area, and so Planning and Zoning Commission would be making recommendations to them. It adds another step for the developers where they have an additional three readings at council prior to any approval besides just getting the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval directly.
Any questions for staff?
I have one.
Good.
Can we go back to the map where it shows the whole development? So are we talking about the common area that is inside the northern section that's bounded by the roads? I can't read them.
Yeah, so the boxes that are on the screen are to indicate kind of home sites.
Sure.
It's not necessarily a unit size. On each one of those units, the homes that are being built are, there's two floor plans, and they alternate between through the whole development. So the limited common area, because there are two differences, will vary between those unit styles.
Sure.
So you can see here on the screen that two of them have the same kind of size depth-wise, while this unit is four-foot kind of shy of that. So the area that you're, I believe you're referencing is these common zones behind.
Correct.
These should really be unimpeded by the fencing, because if you look at the box for the unit, it's only 30 feet past what is assumed, but then when you do the home site itself, that could have a stacking variation in between them.
So when you made the comment about the homeowner would be responsible for mowing, you're talking about only inside this fenced area?
So if you look at this...
Not outside that fenced area?
Yes, if you look at this graphic here, it's my understanding that anything that's hatched would be up to the unit owner to maintain, unless otherwise determined by the association.
Okay. And the association will do all the other areas?
Correct.
Okay. And they will be responsible for code enforcement?
I would hope.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's up to the homeowner to decide if they wish to have a fence, right?
Correct, yeah. So each unit's not getting a fence automatically. It would be up to the homeowner to determine if they wanted one. The applicant indicated this amendment basically spurred from people wanting to buy the units and inquiring about fencing, and I've been told there's no fencing permitted, so they want to change the development text to allow for that, but being very specific on a style that would be acceptable.
Will they have a specific style, or any one of those, like the four there are somewhat different?
Based off of the redline text, any four-foot black aluminum fence would be permitted.
So would it be outside the scope of this board to say that we would prefer to have one or two styles, but not allow just anything to go in there?
No, I think that would be appropriate for the Commission to do. Staff notified really the applicant that because they're proposing amendments to this particular section of the text, either Planning and Zoning or City Council could request amendments to the entirety of the text. So you could change any aspect of this or any part of the whole text as a recommendation.
Yeah, I kind of feel like if they get, you know, 10 years down the road and half of them have fences up, the more common they look, the better off they're probably going to be. I mean, they're probably happier with that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we want to get down to the specific brand, you know, because they could go out of style, but maybe the, I don't know, maybe the developer would like to pick what he thinks would be most, he or she thinks would be most applicable for the development. But it feels like if they were to pick one generally that has, like, see the one that has the topper on it, the other ones don't, there's a separation with the, yeah.
Yeah, they're all different. So this fence, just from my experience in the Landmarks Commission, what this lower panel is called like a puppy panel.
Right.
So it's to basically have tighter panel separation to stop a puppy or another animal from getting through. This fence design is kind of hard to see on the scanned image here, but these posts are looped, and so they actually have a loop that goes behind the horizontal rails. Like you said, Mr. Deeds, has the decorative cap. This one is just a straight up and down with no horizontal railing to break it up. This one has a substantial bottom rail, a middle rail, and then a top rail that separates that design as well.
Are there architectural consistencies amongst the different units that are going to be erected here?
So the, there are two to three different floor plans that the units will have. This kind of shows them here with the garage kind of orientation. I believe they're all the exact same width. There are like nine or 10 different kind of skins that the face gets across them and vary in colors, but other than that, I believe all the sides of the units look almost identical. This development fell under the 2003 planned residential district text that did not have any architectural guidelines for how units needed to be designed. So this development came through Planning and Zoning right after the residential appearance standards were adopted, and they weren't required to follow them based off of the preliminary text. But however, opening it up for revision could spur some changes at the council level.
Is the applicant present? Please sign in and state your name and add anything to the presentation or any additional questions for the applicant.
Jonathan Bills here on behalf of the applicant, DDC Management. We are the developer out here at Green Gate for Ryan Holmes, who is the primary builder there or the only builder there. I'm joined by Mr. Clancy on behalf of Ryan Holmes, if there would be any questions regarding the actual home architecture and what's going on there. But Andrew did a great job of explaining when we went through it, the original PUD text, and we were going through it. For one, in the early stages, we hadn't selected the builder yet. We didn't know for sure who the builder was going to be, as well as we had not written the condo association docs. So we were a little bit more vague in that original text on what we wanted to allow. And then as we worked through the condo association docs and as we brought Ryan Holmes into the mix, and even more importantly, now that we're up and running and we've been getting the feedback from the market in what they want, it's been overwhelmingly a desire to have some type of fencing option. You know, we always allowed for an invisible fence, knowing there would be dogs and there would be those types of things, but even, you know, we have a lot of families with young kids, different things, you know, so it's unanimously with all the people that have bought so far, they want an option for a fence, and I think something like 19 out of 20 would plan to build it very quickly if we could get to where we could allow it. With that being said, we've worked closely with Ryan Holmes on this. We didn't want to detract from the streetscape and the look of the neighborhood, which is why we wanted to limit the type of fence. We liked the aluminum black, once consistent color, aluminum rod iron look fence, because we also wanted to keep the openness feel and the look. There is a good bit of green space behind the homes that will still be HOA or condo association maintained, so we wanted to be able to have a good visual as you come in and see all the open space and the landscaping we worked with staff on originally to come up with the landscape plan. So we don't, didn't want to do anything to detract from what we had going for us already. That's where we landed on this. We didn't pick one specific name, brand, or style. We're open to that. We don't have anything against doing that, other than we do want to avoid one specific like manufacturer or one exact style. We would be open to trying to narrow the description just from, I only know because I recently put a six-foot aluminum fence in at my house when we put a pool in, and I got quotes from three different vendors. They all had different suppliers. They all looked very similar, and it was the same quality, residential grade of aluminum fence, but they all were slight variations. So we're open to trying to narrow that band. Somehow with the text, we would be open to that condition. Definitely don't have any issue with it. And Andrew was exactly right. They called it puppy, puppy pickets or something on that bottom rail, which is up there, and that's for people with smaller dogs that they don't want to get out from there. The other things Andrew summarized well, we don't have it going to, technically, that limited area goes to the common distance between two homes. You know, they technically own to the halfway point, but we didn't want to get to going right up to the edge of that, so we only allowed to go one foot. That'll leave enough room both for a mowing strip as well as if the condo association ever needed to come back in for drainage or some issue between them. We're not worried about fences at that point. And by limiting it to the 30-foot, it stays within the area they're already responsible to maintain themselves anyways, so it's already within that area, so it doesn't put any additional burden on the condo association and the neighbors paying for additional landscaping or mowing or anything of that. And by the 30-foot, it keeps it out of any issues. There is utilities that run behind the units, that's where the power runs here, so it stays away from any of that as well. So we tried to put a good bit of thought in how to bring an asset to the community that will look good, it's what the community wants, and still meets all of the original intents of what we were going for with the association. So would be happy to answer any questions that I can at this time, and hopefully you guys will consider this to go on to council.
Any questions?
Thank you. Do you foresee the common area as a play area for kids and, or is that part of your drainage detention pond or retention?
It's all common ground. That would be its green space.
Sure.
So it is allowed, there's access points to be able to get back there. It is open to the community or whatever. So while there's not a structured ball field or whatever, as, you know, we build a lot of different communities, and whether it's condo or regular HOA, you get kids that will play football in the grass spaces and some of those things where they can come together for it.
So I think that, so I owned a home that had a green space just like this, and everybody went out there, and there were walking trails, and you could play ball and stuff. But I think that from the fencing perspective, if you have a model that is shorter in-depth than the others, that maybe considering having a common line where the fences can go to. So someone may have a smaller unit, they're going to get a little bit more yard, but you have a common line that the fences match so that your play area, your common area, you know, looks attractive.
And we think there will be, one, there will be a good bit of space between the backs of these that is that common area. And we debated on best how to write the text. I think originally, we maybe did have it extending further to try to keep it consistent, but with the way the text is also written, that they technically only have 30 feet from the back of their unit. And if a home is 20, you know, you're trying to put into words like, well, this unit will be 28 feet, and then this one 30, or whatever, to keep it consistent, that was also the hope, you know, I was initially worried about keeping the mowing looking nice and that.
Exactly.
Luckily, with keeping the fences, they'll be eight feet apart from each other, the corners. There's enough room for the mowing to be able to get in and maneuver without having to work around it a lot. So that's, we ended up going with it. I'm not against having a consistent depth, but it becomes harder for, I believe, maybe staff to manage, as well as the condo association of how to do it, whereas when you say a consistent, it's 30 feet from the rear corner of your home. It's black and white, since we don't have property lines and pins like you do in a normal subdivision. So that was the reasoning behind it.
Okay. Just a thought.
Andrew, can you go back to the map overlay of the community? One of the questions I have is, as it pertains to the, maybe the one further south, what is that total distance between the homes there, if I'm looking at like the southern point? What, do you know what that?
Which?
If I'm talking here, what's the distance between those houses? Like, am I going to have, are we getting rid of the green space, and I'm going to have 30-foot fences up against each other on the back end of those homes, or is that more of a...
I have not scaled it, but looking at it, like, each one of those blocks should be 30 feet wide.
Okay.
So if you imagine, I think, if I remember, it's probably 20 to 30 feet in between. So if you imagine, I think if I remember, it's probably 20 to 30 feet in between the fences there still would be, I'm guessing, I'd have to scale it to be a precise answer.
Sure.
But roughly, I mean, it, it looks like two and a half to three buildings.
Like an hour. Yeah, because I mean, the, the northern point looks like obviously you'd have a ton of space there.
It's a lot more there.
Still have plenty of green space and, and that, that southern one though, to me is maybe potentially concerning for mowing or otherwise, just maybe eliminating that green space if it was all just fenced yard.
I know when we looked at it, the 30-foot, our utilities are still behind it.
Sure.
You know, the, the Terronics, I know there's more than enough room to mow between there without any issues. I don't know the exact distance.
No, that's okay. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for yet?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And this would be a recommendation to council for approval.
Do we need a motion to close public hearing?
There's no public.
Oh, sorry.
To, to answer maybe one of your questions on the scaling, I'm just trying to find a reference on this diagram that will help you guys. So that's a 20-foot storm easement. So that one is a kind of defined number there.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can visually take that and add a half to it and kind of like turn it in your mind, that will give you a good idea that the 30-foot would be probably 10 feet away from this northern kind of property boundary here. And then on this end, there's probably 10 feet in between the fences on this side if you do 30 and 30.
And I, I believe Andrew.
You were saying it was 30 wide, right? Not 30 depth?
It's, it'll be 32-foot wide.
Yeah.
I believe those pads, is there a?
Can you speak into the microphone?
I believe the pads as they're drawn on here are deeper than the actual house units themselves and may actually include part of that 30-foot space in addition. When we blocked it out, they're all uniform and it's not the, the furthest depth of it. It's the furthest the house could be allowed, but we don't go anywhere near that full depth. So it's even more than if you think of those as the back of the house. It's a good bit more. Do you know the depth of the house that might be on that plan that you had as well? The average depth?
Yeah.
You're correct about the box. Yeah, we don't take up nearly all that box with the depth of the homes. Thanks.
No further comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we recommend to city council the approval of FDP 22-003 as presented.
I'll second that. Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by the chair. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherner, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's approved.
Yep. The last application on tonight's agenda is minor site development plan 22-006. The address of subject property is 6647 Winchester Boulevard. The request this evening is for a minor site development plan to paint the exterior of the building and install new signage. The subject property consists of 26.64 acres on the, my, my language here is incorrect. South side of Winchester Boulevard and West Waterloo Street is in general commercial. The property, properties surrounding the subject property are in the Waterloo Crossing Shopping Center. They are also zone general commercial. The applicant is requesting this evening to paint the existing Walmart facility. The current scheme for the building, I'll have it on the screen, is here's the three slides that kind of zoom in on each kind of section for you guys to take a look at. Consists of a light gray, medium gray, dark gray, and an eggshell accent color. This design spurred out of the July 2018 planning and zoning commission meeting for painting the exterior of the building. The building design ended up in this route with the tri-gray tones. After the applicant presented a scheme at the initial design meeting in May of 2018 that included a Walmart blue in the center of the building that I have a slide that goes over. So up on the screen here, you can see the far left side of the building with the tri-color scheme. Moving over to the center of the building here, you can see the accent paneling around the windows and the kind of side of that entry. And then looking at the center of the building here, and then the far right-hand side of the building kind of mirrors the, the left half of the center of the building. The applicant is requesting to paint the building in the proposed colors on the screen. The left-hand side is very similar to what's there now, just the gray colors in general are a lighter tone. Moving to the middle of the building, the darker gray is darker than what's there now. However, the, the kind of major change is the entrances have the Walmart blue above the center section of that doorway framed around the new signage in the middle of the building and then again mirrored on the right-hand side of the building. There's the kind of proposed on the top and the paint scheme that I was referencing that was not approved by the planning zoning commission in May of 2018, which just had the center section of that building in the Walmart blue. During that discussion, it was noted that by Mr. Ritchie that he had concerns with the blue paint color. During that meeting, there was also some concerns that the signage details weren't provided for review and just looking at the scaling, it didn't, they didn't show it met the sign code. So he was hesitant on voting for the application and wanted to table it to see if that blue color could be changed as well as providing more information on the signage. And then commission member Ms. Canolda at the time, she was heavily concerned about the blue background, noting that the Waterloo Shopping Center development text, which her husband helped approve for the city of Canal Winchester, noted that the blue color conflicted with the brick and the architectural standards for natural material. And she did not want the entire building ending up a solid color. Was concerned that that blue in the center was a stepping stone to doing that and detracted from the idea of, of what the shopping center was supposed to look like visually. So based on the previous application comments, staff is recommending that the application be denied as presented. The applicant is requesting to paint a larger expanse of the building in the Walmart blue, which was a specific point for discussion and change in the 2018 site plan application that was modified to what is on the building today.
So Andrew, I recall this in 2018 and I believe part of our conversation then was some of the softer gray color scheme. And so to confirm, they are proposing changing some of the gray on the one end, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, so if you, and I apologize, I don't have the two on one slide. If you look at the bottom here, this side of the building has a lot lighter tones in the gray. And then looking at the changes, this is primarily the same. The bigger changes is when you look at the kind of right-hand side of the building and the building entrances, this gray kind of tone is more dominated in a darker gray that they are calling a black gray finish. And then that black gray finish is taking over the center section of the building, which was changed to be a lighter kind of frame and color. This kind of paint scheme is, is consistent in what was done in the pre-approval to basically frame that sign in the Walmart blue color. However, they're also requesting that the entry kind of towers be, be mimicked in that, that same color scheme as well.
So the, the site development application before us consists of the blue color as well as the changes of gray?
Correct. Yeah, the whole building except for the brick will be painted.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
With, with an approval, can there be deviation? So now that you've introduced color, could there be more color thrown in? Like, could that blue be taken outside of the scope of this specific?
Not with this application. This application's approving what they're presenting. So they would have to come back if they wanted to change again, you know, four or five years for a new color scheme. And, and looking at the minutes from that May 2018 meeting, that was really the biggest concern with what's on the bottom here is if, the discussion at that time was that the, the blue paint color was to frame the main entry sign. And then the concern from Ms. Canold specifically was what happens when that whole building becomes blue to become basically a large sign for, for the facility. And that the natural intent for that architecture design and the outparts of the development text is lost.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Please sign in, state your name. Any comments you wish to add?
Hi, I'm Connor with Five Star Decorating. As far as the blue, I know that I can't really speak too much on behalf of Walmart, but I know that a big push for them is having blue around entrances and where their signs are just to be more of a bold color for them. So yeah, that's typically what they've been doing on a lot of the new paints that they're going for.
Any questions for?
I guess as, as has been discussed, you have different options?
Uh, no, they have not discussed with me any different options. I know we can go to their architect because I think the signage square footage was an issue. We contacted them to, you know, amend that and be within the square footage that you guys were asking for and they did that pretty quickly, so.
When I first started talking with a representative from Five Star on the paint scheme, I sent them the denied letter and this drawing saying that that color wasn't approved at that time and they, they said they still wanted to pursue the brand update for what they're doing to the other store facilities.
Okay. Thank you. So this application seems to fall in line similar to what we discussed four years ago just in terms of updating the paint scheme and the branding. And I recall just a lot of similarities to, to that application, to this application, although there's a little bit more, I would say this one's a little bit more bold in terms of, you know, changes, which I think Andrew kind of compared the 2018 to now, so.
During that 2018 May discussion, really the, the commission asked the GC for that project if it could be revisited, you know, to, to change some of that design. Again, the, the changes that were basically being revisited were focused around clarifying the signage square footage that it meant. I actually came to find out through this application that it didn't meet the development text and that whatever they put down and their numbers matched, but what they installed didn't. Because this signage update is actually well within the realm of what they're allowed. So they're allowed 475 square feet on the face and the existing signage is like 513. And so they actually went over on their install versus what their permitting showed. So on that end, it didn't work out. They did revise to remove that blue design because they, they wanted to repaint the building. The existing building schemes were yellows, so it was a very yellow kind of eggshell stark heavy design. And the biggest discussion for the paint at that time was just the blue around the sign in general.
Thank you.
Would denial of the application, I, I guess rather, would tabling of the application allow them to come back with a different paint scheme?
Yeah, if you, if you table it, they can come back. If you deny it, they'd have to file a new application, pay a new application fee and they could essentially apply for a change in the paint, the same route. Now, I would say if the applicant, you know, wants to go back and pursue amendments rather than all or nothing, then that's the route I would recommend. However, if they're not directed to do that, then it doesn't really do any good to table it for it to sit in eternity in a table kind of manner.
So if we table this evening for, for one month? Or give them 30 to 60 days to make modifications and come back before us? Or we table it and we, we vote next month? Or can we put a time on it, Andrew? That, you know, 30 to 60 days, one to two months? Or what would you?
Technically tabling it doesn't have a real like firm expiration date. Now, if the applicant has a timeframe they feel comfortable with, at least it gives you an expectation for when they'll come back. Again, I just wouldn't want you guys to table it and Five Star doesn't want to do anything with it so they never come back and it just kind of sits around in a limbo. So I think that's a question for the applicant on a timeframe they would need to, to revise if they, they would like to do so.
Do you have any input on the, if we were to table it, if there would be any feedback from?
Yeah, I think. I think with the same situation as a signage, if we just went to Walmart and their architect and told them what more you guys were looking for, I don't see why it should take, I mean, longer than a week or two weeks to get an answer from them. Is it just the blue and the vestibules that you guys are concerned about? Is that, would that be the only revision?
My personal thought would be the, the, yeah, the blue in general.
Yeah. I would say for me, it's definitely more of a blue thing. I, I drove by that parking lot this evening and actually it's a, it's a sharp look in Walmart as compared to others in the area that have just painted blue everywhere, in my opinion. You know, I kind of like some of the tie-ins of the grays and some of those things. And right now it is kind of gray and brick and eggshell and I, I think it looks sharp. I just think that, you know, to throw a big blue wall up in the middle of that whole kind of development zone would be rather interesting. You know, I, I'm not opposed to some of the grays and some of those things that are coming out here, but the, the blue all over, you know, I, I think it kind of almost takes away from what the property currently looks like, in my opinion.
So with where those blues are, do you guys, are you able to give me a preference of the light, medium, or dark gray so I can let them know what your preference is?
You know, the, the scheme kind of at the bottom there, you know, with, with the lighter grays on each of the, each ends, you know, the entrances is much more in line with the architectural standards of, of that whole development. What is it now, Andrew? Is it more of a, the, the color scheme?
Yeah, so this, so if you look at the bottom of the screen here, this is what it's painted now.
Yeah.
The only difference between this and this drawing is this area here. The rest of it is the same. That was the only thing that was changed for the, the paint.
Well, so looking at that previously, the color is light gray on the bottom there, but what's being proposed is actually the medium gray. Right now, those vestibules, the middle and the middle section, those are the medium gray. But then that, whatever that is, seven-foot band at the bottom, that currently right now is the light gray.
Yeah, it looks like all the gray. Yeah, it looks like all the gray is essentially going a next tone darker, with the exception for the middle of the building where they break out the towers and then the base.
And maybe a small variation of what's already there.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time understanding the brand difference because is the Walmart logo actually different? Or the only brand difference is the blue that you're adding to the building?
So it looks like the Home and Pharmacy signs, they are being, each of those signs there, there's three signs, they will be switched out. Home and Pharmacy is keeping the same verbiage. Instead of it saying grocery like it does now on the other entrance, it's market. And then they're going away with the bigger letters of Walmart and going more towards their star as being a bigger portion of it with the smaller text saying Walmart.
For me personally, I think that would be important to stay with the theme that was created when this development was put together and find a way to mimic what we are intending, because we're asking everyone else in that plaza to match those type of design standards. And then if we were to ask the developer, or ask Walmart, you know, just say, okay, you can put up blue, then I think that takes away from what we've told all the other tenants in that area. So for me, I have a little bit of an objection to all of the blue that's in here.
Okay.
I agree. For me, it's definitely more of a blue thing. You know, again, maybe paint scheme that unincorporates blues and ties in some of more of those grays and tans or eggshells or whatever we were calling them, or light muted grays. You know, some variation of what it is today without the blue, I think, would be considered.
Yeah. So I'll ask them, and the vestibules, keep it the same color, the medium gray. And then in the middle there where that blue is, that whole area inside of that darker gray, have that also be medium gray or light gray, whichever?
One of the items that wasn't really clear in the application I saw was in twenty eighteen, they didn't propose any changes to that standing seam metal roof on the entry kind of towers here. And I believe there is another standing seam section in this area over the garden area as well. This one, they specifically called out painting it a color. Now, I know based off some of the out parcel developments, there have been like a blue standing seam roof. That's like a historic blue color that's been approved. I don't want to step out of my bounds here, but maybe that could be something that gets some of the blue context on the building, but it's up in an area that is maybe more appropriate. Just some thoughts here, and you guys talked this evening, is trying to keep stuff together because the other side of that plaza has a green standing seam roof. And that's the, Chase Bank has an exact same roof that you guys asked them to keep unexposed or uncovered up when they asked for the solar. I think Walgreens has some standing seam green awnings that kind of matched that side of the plaza as well. So I don't know if that is helpful or hurtful for the discussion this evening, but I thought I would mention it.
And I think, you know, through, if we decide to table it, the discussion, you know...
I'd like to see it again.
Staff, you know, just to see what we can come up with, you know. Just to kind of make it all flow together, like the development, like Ms. McDonald said, was intended to be, so.
So if you table it in a month from now, is it that, when you're able to approve that again?
Yep.
And would I need to be here present for that again?
Somebody that can answer questions for the application.
I think that's a good solution.
Yeah, I agree.
So you would like to see those standing seam roofs be proposed to be blue?
Well, I think that's an option to you, if they want to keep blue, that's something you could do. I mean, if you want another little crazy option. If you go back to the gray, the little square and the, the little square, leave that blue, let the rest of it go gray. No, no, no. Oh, yeah, you could almost like the blue dot like that. I mean, I think there's ways you could put in little displices of blue without making it like someone whitewashed the whole thing.
Yeah, very subliminal types of blue in the way that you frame something or...
You go back to that one, Andrew.
Sorry.
Like this blue right here, you could make that like that, a blue too, or something gray. I think it would just be enough of a subtlety to whip me up.
And this up here is actually a window. I'm not sure why it's filled in.
I wondered, but they painted it, so.
We'll try not to paint it.
Okay.
I just think it's a really nice-looking plaza, I'd like to keep it that way.
It is, it looks really good. I currently like it's... I even made the comment to myself, I'm like, man, that actually really looks nice.
I remember when they did that, changed it from what it was originally to that, it's like, wow, that was really sharp look at Walmart, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, need a motion?
Motion to table S D P dash two-two dash zero zero six.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Serna, seconded by Ms. McDonald. Roll call.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of old and new business, just been working with different kind of potential applications to come before you guys. I know Mr. Deeds said this earlier this evening, that I promise it'll be a busy summer. We've been pretty relaxed, so I'm hoping that kind of scared people away. I wouldn't mind agendas this length. But I'm sure we'll have kind of more stuff in the pipeline. You know, right now, we are busy on the backend of planning and zoning with engineering reviews and building permit reviews for projects you guys have looked at. So we still have, the Wright Pack Credit Union had a groundbreaking, Turbo Wash is kind of floating out there. Excuse me. The Evans Farm industrial stuff is going through their civil, and they've done groundbreaking. We have the Temby development on the corner of Bucie and Daly that is going through their engineering right now. So we have a lot of stuff kind of spurring that will start to build vertical. I think that will kind of show you guys all the work you've been doing this kind of past year. For old business, I talked with the lead vet at the Winchester Vet Clinic today. She's actually looking at having a grand opening at the end of September. So that's been four years in the making for that project, so she's really excited to get that going. And just really focusing right now on code enforcement, doing a lot of cleanup activities. I probably sent more letters out the past kind of month and a half than I have the last three years. Just, you know, we've been very kind of really during the COVID pandemic allowing people to have a little more liberty and kind of business operations and residential kind of appearance to kind of help aid in keeping the community kind of going. And now we're starting to crack the look a little bit, and some people are shocked on kind of what we enforce now that we're starting to enforce stuff, so that'll be a learning curve. Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot for discussion unless you guys have anything you want to talk about.
Just one quick question on the code enforcement. So if there's an issue in an area that's governed by homeowners association, is the proper step to go to the association first and then to the city?
My preference would be, my preference is always to try to address the problem personally before you go to the code enforcement side, because I found a lot of it can be addressed if a neighbor...
Right, but if it's not?
I would say start with the H O A. If they, you know, are non-responsive or don't think there's anything wrong, then, you know, staff can take a look at it. A lot of the times, there's just enough nuance in what code says, and the H O A kind of tends to know those things to do the bare minimum. I hate to say that, but it happens. So if there's anything, you know, that you have questions on, just reach out.
I get asked every now and again, and I always point people to the H O A first, but then...
I usually use the same thing, approach the H O A. One thing I thought that was very interesting, the application for the fences at Green Gate. I actually got a fence permit application today from a resident that wanted a four-foot wood fence. And I called the contractor and said, hey, the development text is allowed for fencing. And he says, oh, I've sold twenty fences in that neighborhood already. There's only three houses up, so I don't know if he was like, you know, fudging the truth or whatever, but I don't know if, the challenge of that neighborhood is going to be it's a detached condo. So I don't think the buyers are aware of how that kind of funnels back through a condo association, which is different than an H O A. Typically, they're more active. And Ryan Homes, I think this is their first condo project that's detached. So I don't know how they're adjusting, you know, managing it. But this is part of the learning curve, I think, for them on this particular development, so.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
So that vet clinic, is that, is that entire building vet clinic? Because it looks like it's big enough, you could have another tenant or two in there.
Yeah, so the original intent, that building was going to have a full twelve-foot tall basement. That would be kind of their like boarding kind of capabilities. The building no longer has a basement because of geotech concerns, so they added a quarter of the basement as an addition on the back. So the size of the utilities that they were going to offer scaled way down. But the building is a substantial size. It's a dramatic growth from where they're in now. And they're going to have a full-time resident vet that will live upstairs to provide twenty-four-hour care. So that's why the building's so tall. There's actually like a thousand square foot apartment up there.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Serna, yes. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Timeout eight oh two.